Okay, let's start with a roll call, please.
Kim Prepper.
Here.
April Fabella.
Here.
Ronnie Mains.
Here.
Bob Perry.
Here.
Rick Skinner.
Here.
Jenna Smith.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum for the November 3rd, 2025 City Council Meeting of Williamstown. I've called the order. Welcome guests, everyone. If you have not signed in, please do so. And with that, we will ask Councilman Skinner to lead us in invocation and then a pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we just come to you thanking for the day you've given us, for the beautiful weather we've had. We just pray, Lord, you'll be with this group as we meet to discuss the business of Williamstown, be with us as we make those decisions, Lord, and lead us into the right decisions based on what we know and the knowledge that we have. Be with us, watch over us, these things with us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Please be seated. Couple announcements. November 11th, Williamstown Veterans Day Ceremony at Williamstown High School with the breakfast at 8:30. So at that point, we will recognize our veterans of Williamstown. There will be an award ceremony at 9:00 AM where we will celebrate the Veteran of the Year. It's at Williamstown High School on November 11th. And it's a breakfast at 8:30. Next regular scheduled council meeting is November 18th at 6:00 PM. And FYI, the city offices will be closed on Thanksgiving, the 27th and the 28th. And that's the Thursday and Friday, correct? And again, I apologize for my voice. I'll try to keep everything short. Mayor's update, just a couple things. We are going to have a all-residence town meeting at the Williamstown School on December 2nd. I believe it's that's a Tuesday from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. During this meeting, we will provide updates on current city projects and discuss upcoming initiatives that will continue to move our community forward. So we had recently a business meeting that went over very well. And as a matter of fact, I just sent out the action plan that we said we would send out to all the attendees to that meeting, on items that we said we would work on, gave everybody an update of what we're doing and when we do by. We will discuss all that at the town hall meeting, plus others, other stuff. Now, I'm hoping to get an agenda out next week so the residents can see what we'll be speaking about. And of course, there'll be plenty of opportunity for the residents to ask questions. I'm going to invite the council to be there and our city superintendents. And so there'll be questions to be asked and hopefully we'll have answers. If not, we will get back. An FYI, we have received a few reports of dogs roaming around the city limits lately. And that can be a dangerous situation. I just want to make sure as a reminder, everybody understands we have a leash law in the city of Williamstown. And I would like to make sure that if you, your pet, you know, if they're in your yard, that's fine, they should be contained to the yard. If they are outside the yard, they should be on leashes. For everybody's safety. And one last update. Last week, there was an incident at the Williamstown School involving a juvenile in possession of a firearm. The Grant County Sheriff's Department and Williamstown Police Department responded promptly and professionally, resolving the situation without injury or further incident. So I want to personally thank both departments for their swift and disciplined response, a true reflection of their training, professionalism, and dedication to our community's safety. Chief Collins, well done to you, for you and your department. And the same along with the Sheriff's Department. And I appreciate, and I know the residents appreciate, your quick response. And Chief Collins also asks the residents to please keep your vehicles locked, especially at night, as a precautionary measure to help prevent theft or unauthorized access. We've had a few open vehicle break-ins lately. And I urge everybody to keep their doors locked, especially their vehicle doors. That's all I have for updates. Any questions on any of that? Okay, now hearing any questions, we'll move on to old business. First up is corrections and approval of minutes for regular council meeting October 6th. In front of you, you will see an updated copy of the minutes from October 6th. Councilor Skinner gave me a heads up the other day that on this meeting, Bob Davis was left out of the also present column. He was here. He perhaps didn't sign in and therefore was missed. But the corrected version is there, Rick. And so I think we'll take these one at a time. For motion to approve, and we'll go forward.
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilor Perry to approve the minutes of October 6th, 2025. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ronnie Mains. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, roll call.
Kim Prepper.
Yes.
April Fabella.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Bob Perry.
Yes.
Rick Skinner.
Yes.
Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the correction and approval of minutes for a special council meeting on October 15th. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes as presented for the October 15th meeting.
Motion made by Councilor Skinner. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilor Fabella. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, please.
Kim Prepper.
Yes.
April Fabella.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Bob Perry.
Yes.
Rick Skinner.
Yes.
Jenna Smith.
Yes.
So moved, thank you. Next, City Council Consideration Approval of the City of Williamstown Regular Council Meeting of October 21st. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor, that they be approved as presented.
Motion made by Councilor Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob Perry. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, please.
Kim Prepper.
Yes.
April Fabella.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Bob Perry.
Yes.
Rick Skinner.
Yes.
Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved, thank you. Next is the City Council Consideration Approval of the City of Williamstown 2025 Gravel and Rock Hauling Bid. Before you, the sealed bid memo, request for bids, and the bids themselves. And the recommendation is for recommending the contract to RC and T for the amount of eight hundred, oh, excuse me, eight dollars per ton.
No, we're doing concrete?
Yeah, concrete was before gravel.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry, concrete first, please. Concrete bid, excuse me. Sealed bid for concrete, you have the memo, the bid, and the recommendation is for sealed bid to Ernst for the 2025-26 season. Is there a motion?
I have a question on that.
Sure.
Do we have to take any of them? Can we just carry over from IMI, from last bid? Is there a reason we rebid because they didn't bid and they give really good service because they're local? I'm just asking.
I don't. Ernst is, you know, out of Walton, Kim?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, it's a lot easier to get service from a local company. And was it bid just last year?
Do you know? Both of us were here, so.
It was.
So.
Well, I mean, did they ask IMI to bid or?
Right, yeah, I'm sure they did. I hope they did.
Yeah, of course.
Did they just not want to?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
I don't know either. We only had one bidder, I believe, and that was Ernst.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that paperwork said there was just one submission.
Well, what I, if we go with this, which I understand, that's probably what we should do because IMI didn't take enough interest to do it. But if it becomes an issue, maybe Derek can let you know that it's become an issue and we can look at it again and maybe ask IMI if they would consider or?
Yeah, yes, we can do that. And yet, they were asked and they did not bid, so I hear what you're saying, Rick. Any other discussion? I mean.
No, I'll make that motion to accept.
To accept. Motion made by Councilor Skinner to accept the bid.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ronnie Mains. Any further discussion on this? Thank you, Rick. Roll call, please.
Kim Prepper.
Yes.
April Fabella.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Bob Perry.
Yes.
Rick Skinner.
Yes.
Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Did you skip over the 21st meeting?
No.
No, we didn't.
Didn't get it?
No.
I guess I just slipped through that. I just didn't sure.
Come on, Frank.
I hear that right?
Well, Bob slipped through it.
I slipped through too, I'm sorry.
Good enough.
Because I turn the papers over each time and I didn't have that turned over yet. Sorry.
Okay, City Council Consideration Approval for the City of Williamstown 2025 Rock, Gravel, and Rock Hauling Bid. Here we go. This is at eight dollars per ton. The recommendation is for RC and T to be awarded the bid. Based on their quote. Is there a motion?
I will make that motion, Mayor, to accept the bid from RC and T based on the recommendation from Derek Holland.
Motion made by Councilor Smith to accept the bid, hauling bid for RC and T regarding the hauling contract for gravel and rock. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Fabella. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, please.
Kim Prepper.
Present, not voting.
April Fabella.
Yes.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Bob Perry.
Yes.
Rick Skinner.
Yes.
Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, so, next on the agenda, under old business, I believe, still on the old business, is the first reading of ordinance 2025-16, text amendment amending Article 7 definitions of the official zoning ordinance of the city of Williamstown, adding boutique hotel to definitions. Mr. Morgan?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, ask you to read item number seven because I'll just read one summary for both of those.
Okay, absolutely. And the second is ordinance 2025-17, text amended amendment amending Article 10, District Regulation, Section T10, C Central Business District, Zone of the Official Zoning Ordinance of the City of Williamstown, Adding Boutique Hotel as a Conditional Use.
And could it be allowed that he just reads the new red edition?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is a summary, as Councilmember Skinner just mentioned, reading only those changes, the additional or the new language, as the case may be, to these two sections from these two ordinances. This is ordinance number 2025-16 and 17, an ordinance of the city of Williamstown, Grant County, Kentucky, amending the text of the official zoning ordinance 80-199 at SEC. Article 7 definitions, Article 10 District Regulations, and Section 10 CBD Central Business District Zone. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of Williamstown, Grant County, Kentucky, as follows. Whereas the city council of the city of Williamstown, Kentucky hereby defines a boutique hotel as a building or structure kept, used, maintained, advertised, or held out to the public as a place where sleeping accommodations are furnished to the public consisting of a total of 50 or fewer lodging rooms. A boutique hotel shall be located in a renovated space in the city of Williamstown and as such may have lodging rooms on the ground floor of the building. This is the summary of ordinance 2025-16. And whereas the city council of the city of Williamstown, Kentucky sees fit to add boutique hotel to the conditional uses exceptions expressed in its official zoning ordinance 80-199 at SEC, Article 10 District Regulations, Section 10 CBD Central Business District. This is the summary of ordinance 2025-17, given the first reading at regular session the third day of November 2025. There's a line for the mayor and the clerk to sign.
This is the first reading of both these ordinances. Is there any questions at this time? Hearing no questions, we will have the second reading at the next council meeting. Under new business, we are going to hear from Cindy Ray, senior center superintendent who oversees the senior center in the room behind there. She wants to give us an update and a few items of information. Come on up, Cindy.
First, I believe pictures helped in the room that you came to from here. But I will leave this here because, you know, my one I do get done, I will.
Okay.
For some reason, it's dark out there now. But I leave this here and this will give you a better idea. Let me stop skipping it. But it will give you a better idea, we set up for Memorial Day and trying to get information out of Dr. Senior Center. And we got these pictures that day. And they pretty well kind of give you an idea of some things that we have done throughout this. I'll just leave these and you all can look.
Know what, I'll be glad to pick that up and show everybody else. You go ahead.
And you all were given a packet that had the November calendar. You had the, the brochure that we hand out. The pictures in that, we decided to go with generic pictures so that we wouldn't have to keep changing, we wouldn't have to keep changing. I would like to have, I really liked it better with current pictures, but keeping it generic, we don't have to change it so much. You were also given a page that talked about senior center operations. One reason I wanted to come was because I kind of felt that maybe not everyone was aware of what the senior center was or what we were doing, except for the exception of Park over here. He's the one who brought me in here, got me started with this. But we are not just a place where you come and play cards and drink coffee. We have to answer to the Kentucky Department of Acing and Independent Living with everything that we do. Even I considered the mayor, my boss, and you all as well. The operations of the senior center to make sure that we are staying compliant and ensuring for the state comes down from the area development. But maybe by the name of Kelly Vaughn, who oversees all of the operations of the senior centers in the native counties of Northern Kentucky, and that's a pretty big job. And Rick, I don't know if you know, but she is retiring at the end of this year, which we have no idea who is going to replace her. We'll find out hopefully soon, or hopefully by the end of December. But I don't know who's going to be able to build her shoes, I really don't. But have you had a chance to look at these definitions on senior operations? Have you even looked at it? A lot of times seniors don't read the calendar. I put things on the back of the calendar and they don't read them, so that's okay. But we strive to have programs that incorporate all, all of this. Information and assistance is not really something that we could always get with the event on the calendar. That will be if somebody calls and is wanting information on where to go for senior commodities. The senior commodities used to be done at the senior center, COVID hit. And Sherman Pole Gospel Assembly is the volunteer organization that distributes the senior commodities. They decided to take that back and do it at their church. They have a drive-through thing in which people really don't have to get out of the car to do that. I would like to get it back here, but I'm not sure if those volunteers would come back to do it. But information assistance consists of people calling to find out about senior commodities. Or the summer, it was the farmer's market for seniors. Today, the call that I had was when this community action, when they start taking applications for the HEAP program, which is Heating Energy Assistance Program. So people are asking that already. And I'm sure, correct me if I'm wrong, do we still have the government shutdown? Has anything changed today?
Has not.
Didn't say so. But seniors get, a lot of seniors get food stamps. That may change, that is something that I'm looking at, trying to help seniors. So hopefully, maybe some of the people that are getting the senior commodities, we can get them convinced to come into the senior center and at least have what's called the Congress Gets Meal three times a week. And if we need to expand that a little bit to be able to help them, if it comes down to it, we'll try to work on doing that. Education units come in and the things like if you look on the calendar, on Wednesday, November 5th, we have a program coming in, the senior medic here for the program. This program educates seniors about the different scams that are going on. And it's pretty, I mean, it's pretty scary for some of them. But there are, we try to help them through that. I mean, a lot of seniors have been scammed through things like the grandparent scam in which their grandson calls or they, the person that comes says it's your grandson and they say they're in jail, grandma, will you bail me out? We try to educate, the first thing to tell seniors, if you don't recognize the call, if you don't recognize them, don't answer it. Just don't answer it if it's important enough, they'll leak a message. And I also try to tell them, be a hard-nosed grandmother like I am. My grandson calls and says he's in jail, I'm going to assume he needs to be in jail for a while. So just let him stay there, okay? Just let him stay there. So that's how we get some educational units in there. Also, we are required every month to have a nutrition education program every month. And the way that we do that right now is through a program at the extension office called Cookie Through the Calendar. Aisling Congregate, the family consumer science agent, he's a very good student with senior center. And I really enjoy getting to work with him and close relationship that we have with his staff. So if anyone is not familiar with the program that they extended off as I, strongly urge you to get, to get involved and find out more about those. Also, an interesting program that they are doing that we can, is nutrition education. This is a cook-wild program. They do, I mean, they do a once-a-month program and they use like beer meat and things like that. Broccoli's are really good. Recreation, of course, that comes if people want to play cards. Our field trips, a lot of our field trips can be considered recreation. But I can also get them as education as well because, like, we went to Liberty Hall in Frankfurt last week. Liberty Hall is a historical home in Frankfurt. And lots of history to that. We were hoping to see Lady Joy, who was a ghost, but she did not show up that day. But we were hoping. But we've done a lot of other educational programs as well, we field trips as well. So it's, they really had a lot of fun. And of course, we always have to know someplace to be. And sometimes if it permits, ice creams on the agenda for the field trips. Health promotion. We've got several things involving health promotion. Some of the health promotion activities that we do are what are called evidence-based programs. If you look on the calendar, we've got bingo sites on there. You wonder what bingo site is? Okay, combination of bingo and exercise, real simple. This is a program out of Western Kentucky University, which is an evidence-based program. Evidence-based means that research is going on all the time with this to try to improve it. And these exercises are designed to help prevent faults. And several seniors have said that by doing these exercises, it has really been a benefit to them. So it's fun doing it, they enjoy it, the bingo is part of it as well. They get prizes for winning bingo. So it's a win-win all the way around because for some reason, seniors like bingo. So another health promotion activity we have is every month, St. Louis comes in to develop this program. And that is also considered an evidence-based program as well. We do have a therapy dog that comes to see us once a month. And that one is one that I think I could justify it as an evidence-based program. But right now, I just do it as a non-evidence-based program because, I mean, animals provide us with a lot of support and they're, I mean, they just help us out. Okay, outreach is something in which the way that I do that is I try to get this calendar in as many places every month to where can reach seniors and all that. And I'm hoping that tonight will also be an outreach, outreach time where more people can learn more about the senior center. Telephone reassurance is something that during COVID, when you're doing a whole lot of, doing a whole lot of phone calls. But right now, what generally I do with telephone reassurance is if you've been missing an active order a month or so, I'm calling to find out how you're doing and what's going on. A lot of my seniors are still able to travel and things like that. And so they're, some of them go back and forth to Florida, so they're doing okay. Our senior center is a little bit different in which most of my seniors that come in on a regular basis, they're, they're all living independently, they're all able to drive. None of them, I mean, none of them right now on the roster are receiving senior commodities. It's a little bit different than a lot of other senior centers, but that doesn't mean that we don't want other people to come in. One of the biggest things that we have tried to do is to do what is called planned medical transportation, which I started that when Rick was here. We started it shortly after I started, we started working on it, started to get that going. And then it was COVID hit. And COVID caused us to be closed for 481 days. So, but we've got the planned medical transportation going on right now. We probably have about a half a dozen or more seniors that take advantage of that. And like planned medical transportation is, it is what it says. Don't call me today at 10 o'clock in the mornings and you need to be somewhere at 2 o'clock because it probably won't happen. We try to make it happen if we can, but probably it won't happen. But we do get some reimbursement from the area development district for this. We do also, we're also able to charge, we start with small fees, which I think is very reasonable. If you have an appointment in the county, it's $10 if your appointment is out of the county, like in Florence and Edgewood, it's 15. And if you need to go to Cincinnati or Lexington, it's 20. So I think it's pretty reasonable for that because you pay a whole lot more if you were thinking of Uber or something like that. Planned medical transportation does not include things like cataract surgery because you have to ask someone to know what you're doing and things like that. So it's not malpractice surgery. We would like to get more boyhood transportation than taking up seniors that want to come in. But we just haven't been able to get off the ground on that. But if a senior does want to come in, can reach transportation, I think we can figure out somebody that's coming in that direction that is willing to take them up and bring them in. I would do it myself, but they would have to be at the senior center, maybe for 9 o'clock in the morning, sometimes maybe 7 o'clock or 9 o'clock. And I don't think we want to do that. So any questions?
Any questions for Cindy?
Do you still get the $25,000 grant from Northern Kentucky Area Development?
Yes, please don't get that. And then we also get some additional funds when we do the evidence-based programs, the health-related evidence-based programs. I get $25 a session for that, so I turn in the paperwork to make sure that we get that. Also, last, I guess, field issue, we did a community emergency preparedness event. There were two parts to it. And we should have got about $200 in the first part, for the first part for the community emergency preparedness thing. And then we went online and had a community emergency preparedness event in May. And we got, we were able to get $1,500 from that. And I know that I always had to spend about 750 of it. So I'm hoping to pair up with the extension office and be able to do another community emergency preparedness event. We may look at doing it in the evening. And I'm hoping to do it if we can do it, I'm hoping to do it. Probably early in March because I think that's when the May season may hit and things like that. So would like to do that again. So we get some extra, anytime we can take advantage of it and get some extra money, we try to do that. Any other questions?
Could you explain basically what that entails, what you're talking about here, what happens during it?
The community emergency.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the community emergency prepared. The community emergency preparedness event was something in that we wanted seniors and other people in the community, and it was open to the community, to be ready and know what to do if, I mean, you think about the things that kind of hit Grand County. We don't have too much way on the floods unless you're down there by Eagle Creek or Clark's Creek. I mean, it's more flash flood type stuff like that. Of course, several years ago, we got hit by the tail end of Hurricane Ike in which electricity went out and stuff like that, tornados, that's one. The weather that we had last winter was pretty significant as far as bad weather. And so, and also emergency, emergencies can be anything from, we, you never know when somebody just may walk in off of the street or whatever, you might be at the bank and someone walks in and it's like, yeah, someone trying to rob the bank, and what do you do? Stay calm and all that. So in this, going back and trying to think, we had Jeff Young from the University of Kentucky who was very informative about the natural disaster type things, like the floods and the tornadoes and things like that. We had Williams County Police Department coming in, telling us, letting us know what to do if there is an active shooter type situation. Boy electric came in and they were telling us, okay, letting us know, okay, if your electric goes out, who to call, what to do, I mean, and all that. So they were part of the program. St. Louis Hospital came in to let us know what their role is in case of an emergency and things like that. I mean, even you could consider COVID as kind of an emergency thing, and the seniors need to be, be prepared. So kind of as a follow-up to this, on Wednesday, November the 12th, I have Cameron Sellers from Kentucky State University, I think, who's coming in to help seniors prepare their own emergency preparedness kit, like what do you need to have in that in case there is an emergency? You need to maybe have water on hand, you need to maybe have a certain supply of medication if you can get that. Those are just some of the things that we talked about.
Any other questions, comments?
Cindy, thank you so much. That was very informative. I really appreciate it.
Okay.
Very busy, very busy in that department.
This is something I've been wanting to do, should have done some time ago. To be honest with you, what sparked me into coming to the mayor and asking him to do this was Jason Payne, who I kind of got the feeling he didn't know what senior syndrome is. So I thought it's time to educate and all of that, so, okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Lot going on in that department.
Yes. So get people to come in. However, it's a big problem, no. I'll leave these here and I can get it home with.
Okay, thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Continuing on new business, city council consideration approval to renew the snow removal, to renew the snow removal agreement between the city of Williamstown and Cherry Hill Point to be effective January 1st, 2026, and to expire on December 31st, 2027. And that is within your packet. Basically, it's, we kept it at the same amount that it was the past year. It's $200 every time we go through Cherry Hill Point area, the whole grounds regarding snow removal.
I have a question there.
Yes.
Is that including, like, are we treating it as well or just pushing the snow?
We are treating it as well. Plow and sanding. And if we have to go back, say it's a snowstorm and there's two or three inches, we snow, we plow, we sand, if you have to go back because it's more?
Right.
It's another $200.
Right. And then it's paid by the owners of?
Mr. Mayor, yes?
On the first page of that snow removal agreement, I think the date does need to be changed here. Councilmember Crupper's pointing out that on Article 2 of the Therefore, City will provide these, two-year commence in January 1, should be '26, right? And expire in January, December 31.
Twenty-seven, yes, yes, twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-seven. Still two-year term?
Yes.
And you would need to change your '27 to a '28?
It starts in January.
That would be all the '26 and then?
Expire in December '27 is correct.
All the '27, so that's two years.
That's your two seasons. That's, that's correct.
So on two, we're changing from 2025 to 2026?
Right, and still expiring on December 2027.
I would just say that, you know, for the next time it comes up, just making sure that we're getting, that we're charging enough.
I have, I spoke to Derek, he is very competent. Any other questions? Mr. Crupper?
No, I have none. It's good he doesn't clean the interstate. It's good you're not in the business of cleaning the interstate.
Hearing no other discussion, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Skinner, is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Seconded by Councilor Perry. Any just further discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, please.
Kim Crupper?
Yes.
April Fovella?
Yes.
Ronnie Mains?
Yes.
Bob Perry?
Yes.
Rick Skinner?
Yes.
Jenna Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have two proposed ordinances that we'd like to send to Planning and Zoning regarding solar panels and the zoning for solar farms, if you will, in the city of Williamstown. We have no ordinance at this time, and we feel that we need to do this in order to protect the city going forward. In the first one, Councilor Perry had a concern, and we did look into it. At the end, it says something to the effect that with residences having solar panels cannot be seen by the public from the roadway. We would like to strike that, so please take that into consideration. Other than that, it defines the solar energy regulations into the zoning ordinance and then adds it to I-2, Dust U-2 zoning. And can we take them all, both at one?
I have a question for you on that.
Sure.
So you do not currently have an interested party wanting to put a solar?
We do.
You do have?
Yes.
Okay. So, and they're wanting to put this in an I-1 or an I-2 zone, or you'd have to approve an I-2 zone?
Yeah, they want to put it in a residential.
The I, probably I, isn't it?
Well, it's in, it's in a area, residential area that, in my opinion, should be used for development of residential homes and not necessarily a solar panel.
Okay. So you've got an interested party that's wanting to put a solar panel farm here in a residential area. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So you would have to have that property rezoned to an I-2, according to what we've read this?
Yes, if they, if they wanted there.
All right, so prior to that, they've come to get the blessing of the city to forward it on to planning and zoning. So if you're going to identify a piece of property which may be premature to this, you would have to have a public hearing to identify that for the entire city to see, according to your ordinance.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're saying, Mr. Crupper. What I'm saying is I do not want solar panels in an area that's, in my opinion, should be for residential development.
Okay, I think that's, pretty much you answered the question I just asked, that you would have to have a public hearing to identify that once you got to that level.
Yes, that's correct.
Even prior to a planning and zoning hearing. And I will say that the information that you have provided here is very detailed and very complex on what they could and couldn't do, how strict it would be.
That was done for a purpose, yes.
Oh, yeah, I understand and respect that because, you know, I just figured you didn't get up one morning and say, guess what, I want to put a solar panel farm ordinance in place. Figured somebody was the driver behind this.
Yeah, we have been advised that since we have no zoning ordinance right now regarding solar panels, it puts us in a weak position.
I got you. Thanks for your information. But this doesn't apply to residential, Bob? I bet it not.
Well, part of it did, which we saw, and that was a mistake, so we're going to take that out.
Well, identifying what you presented strictly spoke of nothing but industrial in this.
At the, at the end, it says peace.
There is a thing in there, it says that in a residential section, it cannot be seen from the road.
Yeah, right.
And on our street alone, we have three.
Well, they would have been grandfathered in.
Yeah, that's correct.
But I also agree with you, if this residence wants to have solar power for.
Well, also, if you want solar power, they're going to come in and tell you which side of the house it's got to be on for, for the, on the, on the rooftops.
Right.
We're talking here, on the ground.
Well, solar energy systems, you'd have to have, I think, a completely different ordinance if it's strictly residential. Industrialism, such a scale.
Yes.
That it's, well, it's just not good.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Councilor Perry, is there a second?
You're asking tonight on both of these, number three and number four, the consideration, both of these applications to be applied?
I'm asking, yeah, to, to both of these, to be go to the planning and zoning.
Okay.
If, if, if there's further discussion or further angst, if you will, it has to come back to the council after it goes to planning and zoning.
I'll say goodbye to motion.
Could I add something to that before Kim said?
I'll withdraw it.
With the correction?
Yes.
That it does not, that they can put on, they can put on the street side in residential sections. Because we have.
My advice would be to strike that.
You said that, so I just want to make sure.
So before we vote, so we're basically saying that if someone wants to do this, they have to rezone their property, correct?
What this is saying is saying two things. One, if you want to put a solar farm in Williamstown, has to go into I-2.
Okay.
So if they, if someone wants to put this in a certain area now that's zoned residential, they would have to have that changed to an I-2, which, you know, makes it a little difficult for them. We have a motion and we have a second regarding the request. Is there any further discussion?
All this is tonight, what you're asking is just basically getting a vote to approve to send the application for consideration to the commission.
That's it. That's it.
I say goodbye to motion.
No further discussion, count?
Where can we see, read that because?
Because we have concerns too, because there's some areas of where we live.
I-2 already designated off of Comrade Lane, which shouldn't be a solar farm.
That's I-1. This is I-2.
I-2?
Yes, that's I-1.
We don't have any interest of watching or seeing a solar farm.
I think what.
It's an I-SOR. We see one on the west side of I-75 right there between, off of Ruerk and, what is it? Clayborne Estates and Eagle Ridge Estates. And you got one that goes through there, and it's an I-SOR.
I understand what you're saying, and that's, that was the question I had to ask because prior to an application with this thing, if it goes planning, it's only just for their consideration, with the limitations it's put on this, you would still have to have a public hearing.
Okay.
Prior to this development. Yeah, because there's only one I, well, there's not even an I-2 property now in Williamstown.
I think there is one, I was told today, by the cemetery.
By the cemetery?
Yeah.
Which cemetery?
Well, we only have one.
I don't think you have an I-2 at all now.
Yeah, it's not. Are you talking about 503, Almond?
It's agricultural.
That's what I'm saying, that's not I-2, yeah.
You lost your I-2 property there to a PUD six or seven years ago.
Is that industrial lane right there between Williamstown High School and that, that's I-2, is that not?
That is correct, that is I-2.
It's I-2. There's two properties that could work, but very limited size, you know.
I misspoke on that, that's the only industrial property. We had another site that transferred to PUD several years ago surrounding the ark.
Thank you.
Maybe that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, it's not, it's not I-2 no more.
That's fine. Roll call, please. Any further, any further questions, discussions? Roll call, please.
Kim Crupper?
Yes.
April Fovella?
Yes.
Ronnie Mains?
Yes.
Bob Perry?
Yes.
Rick Skinner?
Yes.
Jenna Smith?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. We will send that to planning and zoning, and again, it'll, it'll come back to us at some point if there's further discussion at that point. At this point, I will open up, open forum for residents of the city of Williamstown to talk to us for any questions. I ask that you give your name and address. Want to get a complex one? Okay, seeing as nobody wants to speak, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Councilor Mains, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilor Smith, roll call, please.
Kim Crupper?
Yes.
April Fovella?
Yes.
Ronnie Mains?
Yes.
Bob Perry?
Yes.
Rick Skinner?
Yes.
Jenna Smith?
Okay, we adjourned. Thank you.
Do what?
We had that.
What?
Right, but I'm not from the solar farm.